determine what happened with these votes. Our team has looked at these systems, and there are a dozen ways to interdict the voting process in these issues. Whether it's mail-in ballot manipulations, they can scan and allocate blank votes, whether it was a 70,000 votes left in the back room. There are just lots of ways to interdict these systems. So with that, I'll answer any potential questions.
Thank you. Next panel, please.
Could I just ask him to clarify one or two things? When we look at this Pennsylvania fixing the vote chart that they all have, could you explain at the very beginning what that line means, Biden injection?
So at the very beginning of the chart, where there's a circle that says on Election Day, what that indicates is there is a spike in loaded votes, 337,000 plus or minus some votes that were added in there in one big batch. So that was an anomaly in the reporting. Normally, you would expect to see a smooth curve going up, not any big spikes. That's kind of what Greg was talking about, the anomalies of loading and uploading those votes. So that big spike that occurs there is a prime indicator of fraudulent voting.
And that's 604,000 votes in 90 minutes, is that right?
Correct. This is 337,000 votes in that.
In that period of time?
Yes.
And when you look at this entire curve with all these spikes, can you calculate how much of a vote that accounted for for Biden and how much for Trump?
Close to 600,000. I think our figures were about 570-some-thousand that all those spikes represented over time.
For Biden?
Correct.
And how much for Trump?
I think it was a little over 3,200.
Now, just to go back to your original document, this one pager that they all have, mail-in ballots counted without being observed. Those are the ballots we were talking about that were not observed in Allegheny County and in Philadelphia.
Correct.
Is that right? 682,770. Now, this is the part that is a mystery. Mailed ballots sent out, 1,823,148. But when you go to the count of the final count of the vote, there were 2,589,242 mail-in ballots. What happened? How do you account for the 700,000 mail-in ballots that appeared from nowhere?
So our cyber team uses white hat hacking techniques. They gather a lot of publicly available information, and that information was from the Secretary of State's website. That website has been updated as late as 11:16 this morning with provisional and mail-in ballots. So those numbers are still changing. They changed last night, so it's a continual target.
This is 22 days after the election.
That number, the 2.5 million number, is no longer on the website.
Just been taken off?
It's not there anymore.
Is there any explanation for why it's been taken off?
There is no annotations.
But has there been a change made in the 2,589,242 mail-in votes that have been counted in the total vote?
I'd have to check the Secretary of State's website as of after 11:16.
And could you also check and see, is there any change in the 1,823,148 ballots that were sent out?
The mailed-out ballots number seems to be holding steady.
And was there any other method of producing ballots other than sending them out?
Not that we're aware of unless, as previous witnesses of testimony, that the potential for multiple ballot counts. So ballots could have been counted.
And have you ever gotten a chance to examine any of these ballots?
No. That would be part of the forensic process. One suggestion, whoever does the analysis is using paper and ink analysis, a microphotospectrometer. That would analyze the ink on those ballots to see if they were mass-produced.
So in addition to the 682,770 ballots that were entered without a single inspection of any kind, there also appear to be something like 700,000 ballots, mail-in ballots, that were never sent out, that were counted.
There are noted discrepancies in the Secretary's report.
That's a pretty big discrepancy.
Yes, sir.
And that's been there.
Thank you. We do have to press on to the next panel since we have a lot of questions pending here. Mr. Mayor, could you introduce the next panelists?
So now we have Jane Winters, Gary Feldman, who's going to be on a Zoom. Is he here? Well, then have him come up.
Please come up as you call.
I believe Charles Nudo, N-U-D-O, and David Shostakis. Think I have them all. Think I have them all. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll start with the men physically in the room here with your testimony, and then go to the Zoom after that. So please.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Gary Feldman. I am a resident and voter of Philadelphia, city and county. I'm registered as a Republican. I have been involved with Philadelphia Republican politics for over 20 years now. I've had watcher certificates, and on this past November 3, 2020, I was issued a watcher certificate to be the watcher for President Donald Trump. This is the watcher certificate that I was given, and it is issued for President Donald Trump to me. These watcher certificates, I'm not sure of the exact year, I'm going to say about 2002 or 2003, are now for countywide. So everywhere in the county, the watcher certificate is good for. So Philadelphia is city and county, so this watcher certificate, which reads, this certificate authorized the individual to watch in any water division in Philadelphia. And that's like the top line. If you want to see the watcher certificate, gladly bring it up. So anyway, I was in my vehicle as kind of like volunteering for the president with an attorney, and he was monitoring any kind of problems that could happen in Philadelphia. His name was Will Chamberlain, and he was pretty good on Twitter and other social media stuff. So we got a word that they were not letting Republican watchers in the polling places in South Philly. So we went to a place, which happened to be a funeral parlor where they were doing the election, and I walked in with the watcher certificate in both hands to make sure that they wouldn't snag it out of my hand. They immediately wanted me to identify myself. One of the problems that happens is the Republican watcher certificates are this gold-orange color, where the Democrats are like a light blue. I've never really seen one, but I heard they're light blue. So they know right away that we're Republicans coming in there to watch. So two poll workers, I don't know who they were, they were wearing masks and everything. I produced a certificate, and she starts saying, "It's not good here." And I'm like, "It is." And I said, "Please read the top line." The gentleman that was with her said, "Would you let you go outside and talk about this?" You know, I was not looking for a confrontation. And the other thing is too, is I did have my bandana on, they had their face shield, but they weren't practicing social distancing. They were right on top of me. So we did step outside because he wanted to step outside. Will Chamberlain is not a Philadelphia resident, so he's not issued a Philadelphia watcher certificate. And he proceeded to take a video of me having a confrontation on the street with these two, I don't know who they were. I don't know if they were poll workers, you know, they never identified who they were. And the video, which was released to the public, is a little over 30 seconds on Twitter, and it already has 3.8 million hits on Will's Twitter page. There is a complete video, and it's on my phone, and I know I did make it available to the senators. It's over a minute about what happened on the street. I tried to explain, "This watcher certificate is for the city of Philadelphia. You're in the city of Philadelphia, and you have to let me observe. I'm the eyes and ears of the President of the United States." And they wanted to allow that. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Oh, sir. Yeah, I just want to add another thing that's really kind of crucial. When this happened, the fact-checkers group, organization, I don't even know what they are, started to put disclaimers on the video. Fact-checkers said they contacted me. Fact-checkers never contacted me. Fact-checkers said that it was a misunderstanding. They said the Commissioner's Office tried contacting me. They used the name Kevin Feely from the Commissioner's Office. I don't know who Kevin Feely is. Nobody from fact-checkers called me. I don't even know if they have my phone number. And the Commissioner's Office did nothing to follow up on any of this. I did see Commissioner Al Schmidt when we were doing the canvassing, but we didn't mention anything about what happened that day.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Shostakis. I'm an attorney, licensed practice law in Illinois and Florida. Some time ago, I was a Cook County Assistant State's Attorney Prosecutor, and during that time, I actually did election law enforcement during the course of that time, including seeing to it that people had appropriate access, precinct openings and closings, that machines were zeroed out. Since that time, I've either been a candidate or campaigned in over 10 other individual elections. And in 2016, I actually worked as a volunteer for the Trump Rubio campaign in Broward County, Florida, discovered them opening mail-in ballots in a locked room. Before that was all said and done, we actually had a Broward County judge monitoring everybody's access. He was actually onsite monitoring everybody's access to see to it that that could happen, see to it that everybody would have appropriate access. Currently, I am lead counsel in conjunction with Judicial Watch in a suit called Illinois Conservative Union versus the Illinois State Board of Elections for violations of the Board in terms of the National Voter Registration Act. Given that kind of background, to give you some idea of where I'm coming from on this subject. On October 24th this year, I came to Pittsburgh as a volunteer with Lawyers for Trump, and I was asked to organize folks to do monitoring of the pre-canvas activities during the course of the next week. About myself with some other volunteers, made over 500 phone calls. We recruited 50 individuals that were willing to come and canvass or come and monitor the pre-canvas, along with 25 other out-of-state lawyer volunteers. We had organized all this because, of course, we had 19, in Allegheny County, there were 19 Republicans on the ballot, and so we were able to have credentials through the RCAC for 19 watchers at any given moment. So we had to organize them. So we organized everybody during the course of time, and they had given us credentials in advance. And then two days before the election, well, the Friday before the election, we got a call from the Electoral Board and said, "Oh, by the way, you need to submit everybody's credentials in advance, and you need to have everybody's signatures on the credentials that you sign in advance." And of course, we'd already had, put together a team of 70, and we'd allocated them four hours, four hours of time, in four-hour shifts to be able to monitor through the course of the whole period of time. And then over the next three days, we scrambled like heck to try and get signatures from the various volunteers and other counsel that were assisting us. Needless to say, we lost about 20, 25 folks that we were unable to get the credentials to in advance and get the signatures back and forth and all the things necessary to do that. So I just, I wanted to mention that you're hearing about global, huge global issues, but it goes down to the petty as well. It goes down to the petty as well in terms of interfering with his access and interfering with changing rules. I know Secretary Bukevah changed some huge rules, but the local boards, day in and day out, were changing rules as well to make the monitoring process next to impossible. At any rate, we did that, and then I went with a group at about 6:45 on Election Day to 901 Pennsylvania Avenue in Allegheny County where they were doing the pre-canvas. And at the time when we arrived, we were herded into what is best known as the Corral. I'm sure you've kind of seen or heard about those things. It was a fenced-in area that was about, the fence was maybe two and a half, three feet high. Closest anybody could get would to make any observations was maybe 15, 20 feet from the closest ballot processor to the maybe 150 feet, because we were in about a 20,000-square-foot area where the biggest room was taking place, biggest activity was taking place. But I would mention that the mail-in ballots were coming into that room already sliced open at the top. We have no idea when or where the slicing took place, where the opening took place, or what was in fact inside those ballots, inside those mail-in envelopes. At that point in time, folks were then separating the mail-in ballot from the secrecy envelope. You could see that, you know, that's exactly what they're doing. They put one on the side and one on the other side. And then they'd take them and put them someplace, and I have no idea. And then the secrecy envelopes would go to another slicing machine, and that'd be sliced open. And at that point, then the ballots would come back, and they'd be divided from the secrecy envelopes. We had really no concept of what was going on. In the room next door, there was a smaller room around the corner that you had to leave the 20,000-square-foot room. It was one about 7,500 square feet. And in that room, there was a machine, and the machine would be apparently sorting things by the barcodes. And then eventually, somehow or other, people would come in with big armloads of ballots from the other room. Apparently with no providence, no explanation of where they came from. And here's an interesting thing that you guys might consider when you're doing this in the future. The biggest, one of the biggest bottlenecks would take place at this point in time because all these ballots came in folded, tri-folded, right? And all the ballots had to be flattened. And so they would take the ballots and put them under big stacks of reams and reams of paper to flatten them out, and then there'd be workers needing the ballots to try and make them so that they could go through the machines. And when everybody's saying, "Well, you haven't counted anything for, you know, X number hours," and they say, "Well, we're trying to flatten the ballots." Yeah, no, it just, it was absurd and obscene. So at any rate, that was when everybody was waiting, that's what was going on. They're flattening the ballots for most part. And then there was about six machines where they were feeding the ballots. And while they had six machines feeding the ballots, as they would go in, two or three would kick out to a different tray than the other tray. And workers sometimes would take the ones that weren't kicked out and put them in a stack, and then sometimes you'd run all of them through again, and sometimes run two or three. We never had any idea if they were zeroing out a machine, what they were doing. I asked the solicitor, the county solicitor who was there, I said, "What's going on?" He told me that this was a Pitney Bowes representative working there that had been sworn in as a county representative, and that sometimes the ballot machine doesn't count those things, and then so he runs them through. But there was absolutely no providence to what was going on in the counting machines. I have no idea, because of course, they would just take stacks of ballots that had been sitting under reams of paper, try to be flattened, and then run them through the machine. So we have no idea about that. And so at one point, I asked the county solicitor, I said, "Can you describe for me the journey of a ballot from the time it hits the door to the time that it's counted? Where does it go? What's the process, et cetera?" I had a short answer, "No." I then asked him, I said, "Can you give me any written protocol about what is supposed to happen? It hits the door, then it goes to a machine theoretically sorted by barcodes, from what I understood from someone else, so that if there's a challenge in advance of the election, they know where to look? Because of course, at 5:00 PM on the Friday before elections, you can challenge things for people having died and a few other reasons." But then I asked, I said, "Is there any written protocol for that?" And he said, "No, we have no written protocol for what we're conducting, what we're doing here." So he answered, he's supposed to be the one giving legal advice to people on how to legally handle ballots. And he tells me that he doesn't know how they're handled, and he tells me that there is no written protocol on how they are supposed to be handled. So I might suggest that there was just literally no way to change. I mean, there was no way to challenge, there was no way to look at those ballots. And I would say, in my experience, electoral experience, one of the things that legitimizes elections is the ability of, not a disinterested third party to review what the process is, but actually an adversarial third party to review what the process is. And this was completely and utterly absent. I had about 25 other affidavits from other folks that had joined me during the time that had been part of this that described essentially the same thing over there in Allegheny County, most of whom were attorneys and had been versed on the comings and goings of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which I might suggest ultimately the last decision in re-canvassing. When the Pennsylvania Supreme Court ultimately said that it doesn't matter how far you're away from the ballots because you don't have the right to challenge anything anyway. I read the opinion, and I said to myself, "The Pennsylvania Supreme Court just called off elections in the state of Pennsylvania." And I would suggest that the remedy for what the Pennsylvania Supreme Court does lies with the distinguished legislators that are before me. But the fact is, is if there is no opportunity for anybody to look at them, and the court has the temerity to say, "It doesn't matter if you come in or not, it doesn't matter how far you are, because even if you're there, you don't have any right to do anything."
Sure. If you could summarize, sir, we are running out.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize for being an attorney. No, I apologize, Senator. But I just, yeah, I'll summarize in one thing. One of the guarantees in the United States Constitution is that, in fact, every state shall have a republican form of government. And I would suggest to you, if the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania determines that they're going to run the state and allow the local election authorities to essentially appoint winners, the state of Pennsylvania no longer meets that guarantee as a republican form of government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If we could go to our two witnesses on Zoom now, if you can come forth. And go ahead and start when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Preate-Havey. I am an attorney and a resident of Montgomery County and the chair of the Montgomery County Republican Committee. Thank you, Senators and Mayor Giuliani, for providing me the opportunity to speak. After the primary, our committee prepared and provided to the PA legislative leaders and members of the Montgomery County staff in charge of the election a 30-page report of the mail-in ballot and Election Day problems and irregularities we experienced in Montgomery County. We made detailed recommendations for changes with the hope that the general election would be smoother. Unfortunately, that was not the case. There are a number of issues that evidence a total lack of transparency regarding the handling of the general election in Montgomery County. First, the Montgomery County Republican Committee was not provided meaningful view of the mail-in ballots at any time despite our requests. Second, we were not provided with regular detailed information about the mail-in ballots over the course of the election despite our requests. Third, we still lack complete and detailed information about these ballots despite our written requests. We were provided our first opportunity to view and learn about the canvassing site on Sunday, November 1, just two days prior to the election. At that visit, the chief operating officer of the county showed us the room where the canvas was to take place. To our shock, we were told we could not directly check the mail-in ballots. After some significant pushback by me, the county agreed to allow two watchers inside the room, but they were never able to see the ballots up close. Again, there was no meaningful observation of the ballots, and absolutely no check of the ballots by anyone other than the county staff, which is all run by the Democrats, as to whether or not these ballots met election code criteria. At the most basic level, we were not even able to check to see if a voter voted twice or if a voter was deceased. And with the removal of the signature being a check for existing voters, there was no way to protect against someone fraudulently voting for a registered voter. In addition to having no meaningful observation or review of over 200,000 mail-in ballots, we were not provided with the change in rules by the county to allow the curing of mail-in ballots in a timely manner. On Thursday, October 29, I received an email from Frank Dean, who ran the election for the county, with a list of ballots with what they described as defects, and if the voter had been contacted by the county to cure the defect. At the tour of the canvas on November 1, we were shown bundled mail-in ballots divided by precinct, which the county identified as having a defect, and explained that those individuals had not cured these ballots as of November 1. The county did not provide the Montgomery County Republican Committee with an opportunity to have an authorized representative present in what was effectively the pre-canvas, a legal term, pre-canvas of the ballots, when it reviewed and contacted voters about their defective mail-in ballots. After immediate investigation, it was clear that other counties across Pennsylvania were not allowing this illegal pre-camvassing to take place. In particular, our neighboring county, Berks County, a county that the president won by over 8%, interpreted the law as written and did not contact voters to cure ballots weeks prior to the election as Montgomery County did. A portion of Berks County and most of Montgomery County share one congressional seat. So voters were not treated equally in these two counties in the same district. Since the election, we have received many calls and emails from Republicans with questions about whether their mail-in ballot was counted, expressing concerns that they didn't request a mail-in ballot but received one anyway, that they were made to vote provisional when they shouldn't have, that they have great concerns about the efficacy of this election. There is a real disenfranchisement of voters across Montgomery County. Many people feel their vote did not count. Because we lack the information we need to tell them otherwise, and because we were not able to have any meaningful check on mail-in ballots, we cannot provide these concerned voters with the assurance they need that the process was fair and that the election was honest. In addition to the lack of transparency we experienced in Montgomery County, the Kathy Barnett for Congress campaign found, with just the minimal information that we've been able to obtain, that at least 188 deceased people in Montgomery County voted in 2020. They also found concerning anomalies in the results. For example, more people voted in the small town of Norristown for the very first time than the voters who vote regularly. This occurrence is far outside the norm of what we have seen in past elections. These numbers must be reviewed and analyzed. In fact, a full review of the mail-in ballots across the state must be done. In order for this country to have trust in the electoral process, elections must be viewed as open and transparent. Both the Democrats and the Republicans should be provided with the same information throughout the process, and there should be meaningful opportunity to observe and object, not last-minute disclosures and rule changes. This legislature must reform the election law to provide for such transparency all along the mail-in ballot process from start to finish. all along the mail-in ballot process from start to finish. And people need to feel confident that the same rules apply to each and every voter in every town and in every county in this state. Thank you.
Okay, next member on the Zoom, are you, are you up? Thank you. Do we have contact?
She's still on.
Okay, there you are.
We're ready.
Please proceed.
Julia Vehi.
Oh, she's on, go ahead.
Hello, thank you for having me here today. My name is Julia Vehi and I'm a resident of Montgomery County and the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Republican Committee. I'm here to speak with you today regarding my experience as an observer of the pre-canvas and canvas of the mail-in ballots. In Montgomery County, we had over 250,000 mail-in ballots requested for the general election. In the weeks leading up to the election, I personally trained over 100 volunteers to inspect and monitor the counting of these ballots to ensure the legitimacy of the vote in Montgomery County. Unfortunately, they were never given this opportunity. On Sunday, November 1st, during a walkthrough of the mail-in ballot facility, we learned that no watchers were permitted to inspect or even see the outside envelope of the ballot. After some significant pushback by our Chairman Liz Havy, the county agreed to allow two watchers inside the room, of which I was one. As an observer at the canvas, I was corralled into a small, narrow holding area, which is blocked off by tables and plexiglass barriers in the corner of the room. Due to the room layout and location of the holding area within the room, I only had visibility to the space where ballots were flattened and scanned. This was a huge area and the closest scanner was roughly six feet away and the farthest approximately 25 yards away. From my position within the holding area, I had no visibility or access to the room where ballots were sorted, outside envelopes were inspected and both outside and secrecy envelopes were open. This space was divided from the scanning room by a large white wall, blocking all visibility to the slicing machines, the Bluecrest sorter and the ballot storage room. In my opinion, this was a totally separate room and not one room, as the county election board argued. During our walkthrough of the campus facility on Sunday, November 1st, we argued that this was a separate room and was told by the county Chief Operating Officer that we would be able to view this space by the security camera footage. The footage from these cameras was streamed to televisions in a conference room on the other end of the building, which was approximately a four-minute walk away from where the ballot canvas room was. The system was not set up on our walkthrough day and it was not until I arrived back at the facility on 7:00 AM on Election Day that I could see the footage was extremely poor quality and you could only see pixelated images of workers moving around the room and had no meaningful visibility of the ballots. Over the last 10 months in my role, I have spoken to thousands of voters firsthand who have lost faith in the election processes and procedures in Montgomery County and across Pennsylvania as a whole. Today, I still lack the information needed to properly inform voters that their vote was in fact counted. I thank you for holding these hearings today and I hope that the appropriate legislative changes are made to restore confidence in our elections. Thank you.
Facts are stubborn things and I appreciate you guys laying it out there. It doesn't make a difference. Mayor, if you can introduce the final panelists before we get a question and answer time.
I believe there are two other.
Two more on Zoom? Okay, please come forth, friends on Zoom when you're ready.
Here we are. We're here, but we can't see ourselves. Can you hear us?
We hear you loud and clear. Please begin.
Okay, my name's Charles Nudo. I live in Drums, Pennsylvania. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me on the screen?
You're not on the screen.
No, but please continue.
Okay. Go ahead. My mother, no, we got somebody else.
Let's go with what we got. Please start.
Can you see us?
We see two ladies.
Can you see us?
Yes, we have the two ladies on the screen.
Barbara Solika.
My name is Barbara Solika. I went to the voting polls on November 3rd to vote in person. I waited two hours in line and when I went in, I showed identification and I was taken up to the polling place. The polling man showed me what to do, turned it on and said, go ahead. I voted and I printed it out. And when I got it and I looked at it, Trump was not on there. I voted for Trump and it wasn't there. My daughter, I called her over and I said to her, look, his vote is gone. I voted for him. So I called a pollster over and he said, it's not supposed to be seen. It's for privacy. Just put it through the scanner and you're done. It bothered me. It's been bothering me since because I voted. And was it counted or was it flipped? I don't know.
And I'm speaking on my mom's behalf also as a witness. My name is Cheryl Nudo. I was there that day. I drove her to the polls. When she got done voting, she showed me the printout and she was saying how the president's name that she voted for was not printed out when all the other delegates that she had voted for were on the printout. Me not knowing, because I had not voted yet, how the printout was supposed to look, we went to the pollster that was there and asked him why the president and vice president's name did not print out when all the other names of the candidates printed out that my mother had voted for. It seemed very strange, but not knowing any better, we asked, well, what is the next step? And he said, oh, I'm sorry. He said that it did not print out because that's for voters' privacy, that none of them vote, but none of them print out. So we asked him what the next step was and he said to put it through the scanner. So that's what we did and we left and it seemed very odd. Then I went to where I live in Drums, Pennsylvania, which is about 10 miles south of where my mother voted. And I voted, no problem. Everything printed out just as, you know, it should. And I scanned it through. So it just seemed very odd and we wanted to report that, that in my mother's area, which was Fairview Township, it seemed very odd that it did not print out. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Charles Nudo. And by the way, my mother-in-law is 84 years old. She forgot to mention that. Anyway, my wife then. I'm sorry, she's 80. My, my wife called me that day and she was distraught and told me everything they just told you. So I go to my polling place around 3:30, 4 o'clock here in Drums. And when I first walked in, a young gentleman came up to me, started explaining how to vote. And he said, take the stylist, make your choices, then print it out with a printer that's underneath the machine. And I thought, that's odd. I'd been voting since 1992. We never had to print a ballot. And I actually thought it was easier to vote in 92 on the World War II surplus voting machines with the curtain. If, did your choices, opened the curtain and they went click and everything went, all of a sudden we have to print a ballot? So anyway, I'm pretty good with computers. I made my choices. I printed it out. All my choices are on there from president on down ballot. And he said, now you have to put it in the scanner. And he turned over a sample ballot and pointed it at a weird triangle in the corner and smiled at me. I didn't know what he meant. So I go over to the scanner and I'm wondering, well, a scanner works face down when you scan, because I have one at home, if I put it in face down or face up. So he's already across the room talking to another gentleman that's about 20 years older than me, trying to tell him how to do it. And I said, are these face up or face down? And he just nodded. He didn't say either way, he just nodded yes. So I put it in face up. So I don't even know if it scanned the blank backside or the voting top side. And anyway, I overheard that conversation, not wittingly or that I wanted to. A man, I'm 58, he was about 78, saying, oh, they said to him, now do you understand? And he said, yeah, I think, but my memory's not too good. And when I walked out of there, I realized it's total voter suppression. My mother-in-law here did not even get a cell phone till last year, has never sat at a computer and keyed anything in in her life, has no Wi-Fi internet service at her house. Neither does my mother. She has a cell phone, but it's a flip type. And these are the people that went by the thousands or millions to our polls and had to go through this system. And I just wanted to point that out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Mastriano, before we turn to our, our next panel, I want to note that Senator Cameron Bartolata has joined us from southwestern Pennsylvania on Zoom and Senator Bob Minch from the southeast.
Doug. Thank you, Senator. Can we go over to the final Zoom panelists? Mr. Mayor, we have more? Thank you, Scott.
I think we have a surprise guest, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is it my turn?
Just hold off one second. Just give me a minute.
Okay, it's really hard to hear you guys.
Are we ready, Molly?
Jenna?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, may I introduce?
Let them finish their testimony, I'm watching, it's fantastic.
Well, you might as well.
But let them finish their testimony.
He wants to finish. He wants to finish.
Okay. Okay, please, can you hear me on Zoom? If you can introduce yourself and proceed.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you loud and clear.
Okay. My name is Olivia Jane Winters and I'm a professional organizer and a business management consultant and I live in Philadelphia. I actually was asked to be a minority inspector in 3615. That's the ward in the division. I was just purely doing this to help my mom out. She's a ward leader in a different area of the city. I'm actually not a, I'm a registered Democrat and I just wanted to help and make sure it was a fair election. I don't, I don't care who wins, I care that it's a fair election. I showed up to the polls at 6:30 in the morning. Immediately, I was met with a hostile attitude from all of the people that I had to work with. That would be the majority inspector, the poll watcher, the machine operator and a committee man who was electioneering in the polls. He was wearing, he was wearing shirts and a hat and a mask for who to vote for. We are about like an hour and a half in in the morning. We have a long line of people. We must have had, I don't know, 60 people in line in the building, snaking around the building. And a woman came up and said, I'd like to turn in my mail-in ballot so that I can vote in the booth. And the girl who was clerking for me said, well, if you want to turn in your mail-in ballot, we're going to need to have you fill out this form and the majority inspector is going to need to sign the form. The majority inspector had decided in the middle of the morning to go home and was not in the polling place for over 45 minutes. To my understanding, you as a minority, as a, I'm sorry, not the majority inspector, the judge of elections, my apologies. She had gone home. And to my understanding, the judge of elections is not to leave the polling place. So she was out of the building. We needed her to sign this form. The man who was electioneering and was a poll watcher, but also a committee man, confronted myself and the clerk and said, you don't know what you're talking about. Anybody can sign the affidavit. Why don't you stop trying to cause problems? Why don't you shut up? Started getting in my face, cursing at me, telling me that I needed to be quiet, that I didn't know what I was talking about and I should just learn to sit down and not say anything and just let it happen. And my clerk and I said, no, we're not going to let that happen. That's ridiculous. It says very clearly in our training and on this sheet that an affidavit needs to be signed by the judge of elections if somebody's going to turn in a mail-in ballot before they can go vote in the booth. We made her wait. Finally, the judge of elections came back. Not, of course, before he was threatening me. The majority inspector threatened to slap me in the face. And he told me that it was going to become a quote unquote racial issue. I'm not really sure why that would become a racial issue. It has nothing to do with race. It has everything to do with following procedure and making sure it's an honest election. I felt threatened. I called my ward leader. The ward leader then called the Commissioner for Philadelphia, Al Schmidt. Al Schmidt had me call and report that to the DA. And then about an hour and a half after that, the majority inspector told me that she wanted to vote because we had a lull in people coming to the polls. So it was pretty quiet. And I looked her name up so that she could sign the book and it said that she needed to remit her mail-in ballot or vote provisionally. She said, oh, I threw that in the trash. And I said, well, then you have to vote provisionally. And the machine operator and the same committee man slash poll watcher who was electioneering that I mentioned before, got up in my face again, told me that I didn't belong there, that I needed to shut up, started cursing expletives at me again, told me that they were going to allow her to do that and that I better be quiet about it. And then they let her go into the polls and vote. And she did not vote provisionally at all. She voted and who knows, maybe she voted twice. Not to mention, it wasn't until I had actually called our ward leader, who had called the commissioner, who had called the DA, that they then sent representatives down to discuss this with me and defend me. I mean, I had maybe six men there because I was being threatened in the polling place. And his, the committee man that I mentioned earlier, who was threatening me, then got his cousin involved, who was working the polls as a poll watcher and was also wearing electioneering gear. She got up in my face, demanded to see my credentials, then refused, tried to refuse to give them back to me, told me that they were illegitimate minority inspector certificates. They basically told me they were going to call my council rep and he was going to come down and make me leave. I just ridiculous threats. I've been testified in a hearing for the city of Philadelphia for them on the same, on Election Day regarding this harassment. And meanwhile, I have mentioned that until we had the deputy sheriff come down and tell us how to actually receive a mail-in ballot and how to vote provisionally, we were not doing it correctly. The judge of elections was not doing it correctly. And I cannot stress this enough. My brother had the same role as me as a minority inspector in a different polling place. And he said, they were not doing it correctly either. I don't think that anybody actually really knew how to receive a mail-in ballot. Most of the books that we had to, to get your authorized signature, some would have a remit ballot little box that you could click and others didn't have that at all. So if somebody came in and remitted a ballot, I'd almost have to like handwrite that in just to keep it as honest as possible. There was no place for that. So I don't see really how they were keeping track of that because you could easily, you could easily do both. And I mean, it happened in front of me. My majority inspector definitely voted and then went into the polls and voted again. And I, unless you have questions, I'm not really sure. I think that's pretty much what happened.
Thank you very much. Senator Mastriano?
Thank you. If we can have our final Zoom, I guess one or two more, if the next one can come forth. Whenever you're ready. Okay, are you on? Hello? Can you hear me?
Hello.
Okay, over to you. We can hear you.
Am I on?
Yes, please begin. You have the floor.
This is Gloria Lee Snover. I am Chairman of the North Hampton County Republican Committee. North Hampton County is a Democrat county where Republicans win elections. I have been involved in the political process in North Hampton County for more than 25 years. I've worked on campaigns for township supervisor to President of the United States. This year was one of the most vast, complex elections I have ever had to oversee as party county chairman. The complex. The complexity was due to the new mail-in ballot system and ever-changing rules. The unmanned drop boxes in the general election that we did not have in the primaries, also changing the fact that voters could bring their ballot to the polls and vote on the machine and many other new procedures. There was mass confusion regarding the mail-in ballot system. I fielded scores of calls from North Hampton County voters and collected incident reports from voters and poll watchers regarding the November 3rd election. The typical calls I would field were, I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot. Why am I on the mail-in ballot list? I did not get my ballot. What should I do? It's been weeks. How come my wife got her ballot and I didn't get one? We applied on the same day. How can I vote on the machines if I applied for a ballot? Is it safe to put my ballot in the mail? My ballot says it wasn't received, and I turned it into the election office in person. My ballot says canceled. What does that mean? I voted in person, and it still says not counted. I've been on hold with the election office 70 minutes. What do I do? In turn, because of these questions, I had a number of phone calls and emails, correspondence with the election office and the county solicitor before Election Day, trying to make sure I was disseminating information correctly to the voters, volunteers, and the campaign. One call turned heated when the registrar threatened to turn me over to the district attorney for posting a picture of a voter ballot harvesting a large bag of ballots at a North Hampton County drop box. It was my opinion, the registrar was more concerned we exposed it rather than the fact that it was happening. The most pertinent information I have to offer this committee was my conversations with the election office regarding curing the disqualified naked ballots, which they unlawfully pre-campus before Election Day. They actually told me on the phone early in October, they felt them, they held them up to the light, they separated them out in different boxes. Reflecting back on these three weeks and the experience, the major concerns regarding this election are equal protection. Were the Democrats and Republicans treated the same? Were they given the same information and opportunity to vote? Did they equally have an opportunity to cure their disqualified ballot? Not in my county. There was no ability to properly witness the canvas of the mail-in ballot or see the actual ballot. Were there signatures? The solicitor told me there is absolutely no law that allows us to see the counting or to see the ballot. To this day, we have no idea what or whose ballots were counted. Another one, very strange. There's a pattern of reactivated old voter rolls that kept reoccurring on the sure system. The sure system is our Pennsylvania voter system. Scores of people that had not voted since the 1990s, more than 22 years ago, were all now reactivated and receiving mail-in ballots. People that didn't vote for Obama or Hillary were all of a sudden receiving mail-in ballots, setting up the opportunity for fraud on a massive scale that would go undetected because voters who never intended to vote would not know. The sure system is not so sure. We also found in North Hampton County more than 1,500 votes where the mail-in ballot was received in the election office on a date before it was even mailed. We have a problem with this election. Thank you for allowing me to share my election experience, and I plead with you to remedy the mail-in ballot process. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our last Zoom, are you, are you there? Can you hear me? And if so, please begin. Is there one more? Nope, that's, that's it? Okay, I guess a Q and A.
Let me begin now with questions from our representatives and senators. I believe probably about 30 minutes, if we may. Up. We have one additional witness?
Commentator.
Please.
I will introduce to you now Mr. President. You are connected.
Thank you very much. I've been watching the hearing on OAN and it's on a couple of other great networks, but I really appreciate being asked to speak. And I'm in the Oval Office right now, and it's very interesting to see what's going on. And this was an election that we won easily. We won it by a lot. A big energy official was on this morning on a important show and said, there's no way Trump didn't win Pennsylvania because the energy industry was all for him. I saw, you know, with, with my eyes what happened, and he told me horror stories, absolute horror stories. So this was a, very sad to say it, this election was rigged, and we can't let that happen. We can't let it happen for our country. And this election has to be turned around because we won Pennsylvania by a lot, and we won all of these swing states by a lot. Anybody watching television the night of the election was saying, wow, I was called by the biggest political people. Congratulations, sir, on a big win. And all of a sudden ballots were dumped all over the place, and a lot of horrible things happened. And everybody in that room, I want to thank all of the people that signed affidavits and all of the speakers, you fantastic people, you're great patriots. I want to thank the senators for being there, and it's so important, day before Thanksgiving, it really represents somebody. Between the voter suppression and all of the horrible things that happened to poll watchers, we have poll watcher affidavits piled up to the ceiling. They're all over. They were treated horribly all over this, all of these swing states, I mean, virtually all of the swing states. And many other things were happening that were horrible, just horrible. But the poll watchers weren't allowed to watch. They were, in many cases, whisked out of the room, not only into pens that were 20, 30, 40, 60, 100 feet away, where you couldn't even see. They were using binoculars. People are reporting that they had to use binoculars, and that didn't work. If you were a Republican poll watcher, you were treated like a dog. And the Democrats had no problem, but they were rough. They were, they were literally pushed out, and it was rough tactics. This is what, what happened here. This is not the United States of America what happened, and I think everybody knows that that's why you're there, and that's why you're so vehement about it. We have many, many cases, many, many cases of people walking in, a woman, an elderly woman walks in looking forward to voting November 3rd and says, oh, good, where would I go about voting? I'm sorry, you've already voted. Your ballot is in. I said, no, I didn't vote. I didn't vote. No, your ballot is in. You've already voted. In all cases for Biden, by the way, she said, no, no, I want to vote. Nope, your ballot is in. And then they give her a provisional ballot to sign, which goes nowhere. It's a disgrace that this is happening to our country. We won this election by a lot. We got 74 million votes. And if you would have said 74 million votes the day before the election, every single professional in the business would have said, there's no way of beating that. We got 11 million votes more than we had four years before in 2016, and we got many votes more than Ronald Reagan had when he won 49 states. And nobody would have said we even had a chance of losing. And all you had to do was take a look at the numbers at 10 o'clock in the evening when everybody thought the election was virtually over, and then very weird things happened. But they're not weird to professionals, and they're not weird to Dominion and other people that operate machines, and they're not weird to the people that handle the ballots where they were flooding the market. People were getting two and three and four ballots in their home. People that were dead were signing up for ballots. Not only were they coming in and putting in a ballot, but dead people were requesting ballots, and they were dead for years, and they were requesting ballot, ballots. And the whole world is watching us. The whole world is watching the United States of America, and we can't let them get away with it. And we have judges that are afraid to make a decision. We have judges that don't want to do the same thing. A very good lawyer said, well, sir, I mean, that's a big statement for a judge to overthrow an election. I said, really? If he got hundreds of thousands of votes more than he was entitled to get through all of the things that I'm listening to right now, and you're just covering a few of them, we have, we have hundreds and hundreds of affidavits of stories that are even worse than the stories I'm hearing. Why wouldn't they overturn an election? Certainly overturn it in your state, because we have other states that are just as bad. If you look at Michigan with Detroit, you look at the things that happened in Detroit, where you have a voter, but you have more votes than you have voters. You take a look at Detroit, Michigan, you have more votes than you have voters. And then you have two people that don't want to certify. They don't want to certify, and they're harassed violently, and they turned off the cameras during the harassment for two hours. And then they said, wow. And they were afraid, and they voted, and then they went back to sign, and they couldn't do it because they said, we can't do it because this is corrupt. This is horrible what's taking place. Think of it, more votes than you have voters, but that was the least of it. They have things that were as bad as that, and this is going on all over, all over. We're doing very well in a lot of states. A lot of good things are happening in Georgia. We're getting little help from government, but a lot of good things are happening in Georgia, Wisconsin, and Michigan. They're seeing what happened in Detroit. And we sure are looking at what's happening in Pennsylvania and Philadelphia. What happened in Philadelphia, they keep the poll watchers not only in pens, but they keep them out of the building. And the only reason they got back into the building was they got a court order. And then the definition of back into the building was very far away where they couldn't see anything. And they talk about closed-circuit television, except you couldn't see it because the picture was so unclear, you didn't even know what they were doing. They could have been playing a baseball game. So it's a very sad thing for our country to have this. And they have to turn over the results. It would be easy for me to say, oh, let's worry about four years from now. No. This election was lost by the Democrats. They cheated. It was a fraudulent election. They flooded the market. They thwarted everybody with ballots. And I just want to thank everybody for being there. You're doing a tremendous service. This is a very important moment in the history of our country, and you're doing a tremendous service to our country. And don't worry about bravery, because the people that talk the most, they're not the ones you have to worry about. And these are all talkers. They intimidate. But these are not people that you're going to ultimately have to, they push you around. They pushed our poll workers out. Our poll watchers were pushed out of the building. Okay? Some got back in, they were put in the pens. But these are not people. Don't be intimidated by these people. But they're bad people. They're horrible people, and they're people that don't love our country. So we don't have to worry about four years right now. We have to worry what happened on November 3rd and previous to November 3rd. And by the way, after November 3rd, when people put votes in, and they put them in illegally, they put them in after the polls closed. And one of our great Supreme Court justices made mention of that, and I can't imagine that any justice or anybody looking at it could be thrilled when they vote after the election is over. So I want to thank everybody very much for being there. I want to thank the State Senate, respected people, tremendous people, and you're doing a tremendous service for our country. And if something was done wrong, if this election was won fraudulently, and that's what happened, it was a fraud. And we're talking about, very importantly, many more ballots, many more votes than the number we need. In other words, if we needed 50,000 votes, we're not talking about we found nine dead people that voted. Of course, there were many more than that, many numbers that nobody even believes. No, we're talking about numbers that are far in excess of the 50,000, far in excess of another state where we lost by 10,000. And they went absolutely wild because we got far more votes than they thought possible. And they've just stepped on the gas, and they got caught, just like they got caught spying on my campaign. They got caught, exactly, they got caught doing this. So I really appreciate it, and the country appreciates it, and we have to turn the election over because there's no doubt, we have all the evidence, we have all the affidavits, we have everything. All we need is to have some judge listen to it properly without having a political opinion or having another kind of a problem, because we have everything. And by the way, the evidence is pouring in now as we speak, and I want to thank Rudy Giuliani for having the courage to do this. There are other lawyers that backed down because they were being screamed at. Rudy is a, he's the greatest mayor in the history of New York, and there's a reason. He's got great courage, and he doesn't care. He wants to do what's right. And I told him the other day, Rudy, you were the greatest mayor in the history of New York, and you see what happened to New York without Rudy. You were the greatest mayor, but this is more important, what you're doing now is far more important than being a great mayor of the city of New York and being its greatest mayor by far, by the way, by far. This is going to be your crowning achievement because you're saving our country. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
I think what you've just heard guarantees that 100 years from now, that this is the most important public hearing ever held by this Senate committee. We turn now for questions. Representative, Representative Ryan.
First of all, thank you very much, Mayor, for being here and for all the testifiers. You know, 16 years ago this week, I was called out of retirement and recalled active duty to go to Iraq to do the elections in Iraq in January 30th, 2005. That was an extraordinarily secure election. As a former commanding officer of a civil affairs group and psychological operations command, I know how to do elections. And what happened in Pennsylvania from a process control perspective was absolutely a travesty. What I am concerned about is the remedy. How do we go from here? We, we see that there's a perspective from our counsel that a 1937 law provided the ability to appoint the electors to the Secretary of State. And I'm curious as to whether or not, sir, you believe a special prosecutor should be appointed at the federal level to look at all these irregularities, or whether or not there is still actions that can be done at the state level to ensure that, the goal of what we're attempting to do is to ensure, as we did for the people in Iraq and as I did with the people in Haiti, to ensure that the results are fair, accurate, transparent, and a representation of the will of the people of the United States.
My suggestion would be, and of course, there are several different remedies that you could have. One would be to declare that the votes that were not inspected properly be declared null and void in that county and deducted from the vote total. It's essentially what they do in Wiscon, Wisconsin has the strictest absentee law in the country. They require an application for every ballot. And when they finish, they only count the number of absentee ballots that have an application. They deduct from the total from that county whatever are missing. So if you have 5,000 absentee ballots but only 4,000 applications, you deduct 1,000 votes. And the reason they do that is to deter people from doing that in the future. Look at it this way. If you didn't deduct the 678,000 or whatever it is votes that were not counted, there's no penalty for it. What stops them from doing it again next time? And it's, this is a question of not voters acting improperly. It's a question of the inferior offices of this state, because they're inferior to the legislature in this regard. the legislature in this regard, acted improperly. They conducted a completely sham election. They're the ones who have to be penalized. It's a little like the exclusionary rule in criminal law. They've got to be taught, you can't do that. The other thing you could do is you could demand to see all of the envelopes that were cast aside. I will virtually guarantee you're going to see a couple of hundred thousand envelopes that have no names, partial names, the same name. You could ask to see the ballots. You're probably going to see ballots that are official and ballots that are unofficial. You have two major gaps. You have the 672,770 votes that were not inspected by anyone secretly put into the ballot box. And then you have this gap that I don't understand between the mail-in ballots you sent out, 1.8 million, and the number you counted, 2.5 million. That's totally impossible to explain, other than what some of the witnesses were suggesting, that they were basically stuffing the ballot box. I believe what happened is they never expected to be behind by 700 or 800,000 votes on election night. They expected to be behind by a couple of hundred thousand. In Philadelphia, to steal a couple hundred thousand votes, they do it every year. And that's not going to be tough. Now you had a real big problem. So you had to create mail-in ballots. You had to stretch it out for a while. We didn't go into detail on the Dominion system, but we have two other experts who can show you how they injected votes into the Dominion system. And also, so I think I would settle this election, but I would definitely appoint a special prosecutor to prosecute the people who conducted this election. You might even ask just a general question. How could the governor and the Elections Commissioner, how could they have selected a company that counts our votes outside the United States?
Amen.
I didn't know that.
Thank you. Thank you. Representative Mall, questions for any of our panelists? This is like our lightning round here to conclude.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what I'm going to do is make more of a statement to throw out a timeline because to try and reiterate what everyone else has already done, just be... A couple of years ago, our Supreme Court in Pennsylvania very illegally redrew congressional maps. It's very clear in our Constitution, that is a legislative act. Fast forward a couple of months ago, our Supreme Court rewrote our election law. Again, that is, needs to be done in statute. It is a legislative act. When it came to the mail-in ballotings, that House bill, I want to say it was 77, Act 77, I was really kind of taken aback by how eager the governor was to sign that bill. Normally, bills can sit in his desk eight, almost 10 days before he signs them, or lets them become law on their own, or vetoes them right away. And that, when he signed, almost instantaneously. And I just kind of wondered. So after I saw what happened in the primary, I wrote House Bill 2626. And this is where it kind of locks it in for me, Mr. Mayor and panelists. In House Bill 2626, I saw where there could possibly be stuffing the boxes. So I said, simply, "Let's put a barcode on the bottom of every mail-out ballot so that a machine has to read a barcode that was accepted by the Elections Office." Before that ballot goes out, they zap it. When it comes back, if that barcode doesn't match one of the barcodes that they sent out, it gets kicked out. The governor immediately, as soon as we ran that bill out of committee, said, "That hits my desk. It's an automatic veto." Not everybody knows that, but that came to us. We had to literally strip that out of the bill. And I will be reintroducing a bill to barcode any ballot that gets mailed out when we get back. Trust me. Then we have the drop boxes, the three days extra to vote, ignoring the signatures and ignoring the postmarks. And I have to come to the conclusion that you did also. If it looks like corruption, smells like corruption, it's corruption. And we've got to get to the bottom of it. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you to all our testifiers today. It's been very informative. My question, Mr. Mayor, you touched upon it briefly, but I want to just, if you could delve it a little bit more into it. Attorney General Barr shortly after the election authorized the U.S. attorneys across the country to investigate allegations of voter fraud. I wonder if you could tell us about the criminal investigations that are going on, maybe specifically in Pennsylvania, by our U.S. attorneys, maybe our FBI? And tell us how that is going? And is there any evidence that's been presented to you? Or are you made privy to any of this information?
I'm sorry, Senator, I wouldn't be made privy to that, criminal investigations. And in my experience, criminal investigations, you know, would take too long to help you in your most immediate decision. Criminal investigations could help you in your long-term decision as to how to reform so this never happens again, which I think you all will want to do. For example, not ever hiring again a company that counts votes in Frankfurt, Germany, that's owned by two Venezuelans who are very close to Hugo Chavez and Maduro. That's extraordinary. And unfortunately, we don't have the time to really analyze the votes. Although, if you want to go into greater detail, we have other forensic experts that can show you votes that were specifically put into the machine. Because these machines have a back door that allows you to do that. So I would say the criminal proceedings are going to take six months to a year. What you have before you that you can verify is, you have before you very, very clear evidence. It's not small. It's not as if these are a couple little mistakes that happen in every... I hear people say, "Oh, every election has a couple of little mistakes." Not 682,000 ballots that nobody got to inspect, that from time immemorial, we've never had trouble in America with absentee ballots. I've been in absentee ballot contests in New York. And they can, you know, they can be pretty vicious, and the language is worse than that poor lady experienced. But we would never think of having one without the Republican there and the Democrat there. Even in New York, we would never think of it. Here, they did it 700,000 times. That's an insult to the legislature, because you didn't provide for that. And you've got this gap of 700,000 unexplained mail-in ballots that come out of nowhere. So I think you have more than enough to say that this election, the numbers don't add up. It's easy to figure out what the right numbers are by excluding the illegal votes and count the honest votes, and the winner of the election changes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Senator Mario Scavelo.
I'm just going to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out here today. We need your support, your continued support throughout this whole process, because we're going to also get the other side that don't want us to do anything at all. And we definitely need to do something. We need to correct this problem. My Northampton County chairperson, Lee Snowa, did an excellent job explaining what was going on in Northampton County. One of the biggest things that bothered me more than anything else was people that went back, went to vote, and they were told they already voted. That happened, I must have heard it from 50 people between, in my district. So, you know, they made them sign a provisional, and I called up and I says, "You better make sure that those provisionals are counted." And some of the other things that were happening, that, you know, most of the stuff that you said out there, it happened in every county. But when you didn't want to vote, which you're absentee, and you went in, you're supposed to get a ballot, not a provisional. And there were people out there that got provisionals. But just a little information for all of you. The new machines, this new process, we didn't vote for it. That was something that was pushed by the governor. He mandated that they all of the counties had to go and change their system. Because he wanted some type of, what we don't have is a form to see what, who voted, or what, who voted. They want a certificate or something, a slip to see how you voted, who voted. And it's obvious that this system has not worked. And the people of Pennsylvania are not happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Madam Majority Leader-elect.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say what they did in Philadelphia, when they closed us out and made us go to court, to do what we should have legally been able to do, is a travesty to what we in Pennsylvania need to have confidence in our elections. That should never happen again, and we should probably tighten our law so that it can't... Secondly, I'm extremely bothered by the absentee ballot and the mail-in ballot request number being almost 700,000 off from what we received. And so we just did try to get on the Department of State, and they did take down their dashboard. So we can't even check it. So if you have any of that information, any pictures or any, you know, website downloads, we would really appreciate having those, because they took them down. So I don't know. Everything they do looks like they're trying to hide something and really, really continues to erode any kind of confidence in our process.
Senator, what I would suggest is, they decided that morning, or maybe a couple of days before, to exclude you because they knew what they were going to do. It wasn't done, it wasn't an accidental sort of whim to exclude all Republicans. It's unheard of to exclude all Republicans. They excluded you because of what you would see. You would see ballots that weren't properly filled out. You would see ballots that were filled out at the last minute. You would see them start to get reports of how far behind they were, because they were connecting to Dominion and Smartmatic, and they were telling them how far behind they were. And you would have caught them right in the middle of the fraud. Why create this big problem for yourself of excluding Republicans in six states, hundreds and maybe thousands of them, if you're not doing something wrong? If you're doing something, as the senator said, that's kosher? Come on, look, who cares? This big thing wasn't done because they were conducting an honest vote. It's kind of crazy to think that. This was done because they knew this is the only way they could steal this election. And when he was ahead by those numbers on Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, they panicked. I'll also tell you, there's an expert witness who can testify that this pattern fits the pattern that Smartmatic used in two elections that they stole in South America. When the election was getting too far away, they called a halt in the voting count. Well, there was a halt called in six places, including in Pennsylvania. In one place, they may believe there was an overflowed water tank. Happened to be one little toilet bowl. They took a two-hour halt. And in Michigan, they brought in 100,000 ballots through the back door and counted them with nobody observing them, except three people who happened to be remaining behind. That's evidence that's also in affidavits and could be presented to the Michigan Legislature. Those people are willing to testify. And just one other thing, these people are very brave people. A lot of people aren't testifying. They're backed up, they're backed up by 50 more who are willing to testify. Obviously, we can't present all of them. I want you to know that all of them are backed up by numerous witnesses who say the same thing. But there are probably another 50 who are not willing to testify, including probably what would have been one of our best witnesses, because he's been threatened with the loss of his job and his children being thrown out of their private school.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Let's try our Zoom capabilities here. Senator Michelle Brooks calling in from Northwestern Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Senator Argyle. I did want to make a comment first. I join my colleagues in being concerned about the arbitrary Supreme Court decisions and their decision to decide to be legislators. And all Pennsylvanians need to be concerned about this. You know, it's not only the election or redrawing maps. What's going to be next that impacts our state? And so not only do we need to be looking at what happened with this election, we need to be looking at how we can stop the Pennsylvania Supreme Court from wanting to legislate when that's not what they're supposed to be doing. And it's very disconcerting, the decisions they made contrary to state law in regards to this election. My question is, if you could talk about the drop-off boxes, again, something the Pennsylvania Supreme Court allowed. Talk about the security around them. I know in my area, I did not have a significant amount of drop boxes. But can you talk about what type of security or parameters of safety were around these drop-off boxes? And also, how many ballots were collected in these drop boxes? Thank you.
That, of course, is the subject of another lawsuit that was brought the other day. I only know it generally. The drop-off boxes were provided, speaking very broadly, in the Democrat part of the states, not in the Republican parts of the state. They were many, 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 very closely, very close to each other in Philadelphia, in Allegheny County, places like that. They were miles and miles apart in other places. And as far as I can tell, I've only read the lawsuit, don't know the details of it, there was no security for them. And there are many situations where very suspicious activity was seen, with people dropping off, you know, you're not supposed to harvest votes, people dropping off 30 and 40 ballots at a time. That's a pretty big family. They're going to have a tough time this Thanksgiving, by the way, with the rules of the governor. They're going to have to eat in like four or five different tents. Hopefully, hopefully, they'll be able to celebrate Thanksgiving. But I'm sorry, I just don't know, I don't know the details of that. But it is the subject of another lawsuit. And the decision of your Supreme Court that is completely outrageous is the one in which they say that present means just being there. I mean, there was a movie with Peter Sellers called Being There. I don't know if you ever saw it, but he was a potted plant. That's totally absurd to think that when you pass the rule that there should be present representatives of both sides or all sides, that you meant for them to sit there and look at the drapes. I mean, they were supposed to be there as the intermediate court decided. This case was decided by the intermediate appellate court in the president's favor with a very sensible decision saying, "Present in this context can mean only one thing, present in order to see the identifying data." And in a completely political decision, five to two, they ruled what I would regard as they, it was a totally irrational ruling, which we will appeal to the Supreme Court. I think it was embarrassing...
Thank you.
...for them to rule that way.
Thank you. Senator Judy Ward.
And I also want to thank our testifiers today. They were incredibly brave. And what I heard today was so troubling to me. I don't know if I'll ever get it out of my head. And I'm sickened by the fact that it happened here on our watch. In regards to doing a forensic audit, would this be able to be done or be anywhere accurate? Does anybody know?
I was just looking around for my two experts. He came over to tell me that all of the material that we have, forensic material we have is archived, and we can easily make it available to you online, and you can look it over. I don't understand all of it, but maybe I have people help me understand it. But yes, you could do a forensic audit of the machines.
Do it.
You can do that.
Thank you.
And I think it would be, it would be very, very helpful. I understand that even one machine would give you a great deal of information about how the whole system operates and how they slipped votes in at various times. And you're not supposed to be connected to the internet in the counting... And you're not supposed to be connected to the internet in the counting room, but they were connected to the internet. York tally was being sent to Frankfurt, Germany, where it was being analyzed.
We have a question from Senator Langerhulk out in Johnstown, connected via Zoom. Wayne, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Argle. Thank you, Senator Mastiano. Thank the testifiers for being here. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your testimony. I've been vocal that we must allow this legal process to play out and a country that we live in that we do not allow that is not a country that I want to be a part of. My question is on that legal review and on those legal process, Mr. Mayor, can you give us an indication of how many lawsuits are pending, where they're at in the various appellate processes? And second part to that, the allegations of the mail-in ballots, the 1.8 versus the 2.5 that came in, is that the substance of a lawsuit? Thank you.
This is Jenna Ellis and the mayor has asked me to answer this question. So as far as the campaign is concerned, we have pending lawsuits in, here in Pennsylvania, that's going up to the Third Circuit, they've granted an expedited review. We also have pending litigation in Nevada. We also have recounts in Georgia and Wisconsin and we also have a pending lawsuit in Michigan. So regarding the mail-in specifically, we are still looking at all of the other legal options and we are also planning on filing additional litigation by the end of this week. I won't go into detail on that, other than to say that this is asking for a judicial remedy to this and, and also I'll invite the question from the panel as well in terms of a remedy. Part of what we are asking, or what we did ask initially, was to stop certification so that we could get to the bottom of this process. Clearly, you've heard sufficient evidence today that would lead any reasonable finder of fact to say that there's been sufficient evidence that you should stop that, you should not move forward with certification. What we would ask the judiciary in terms of remedy can be legislative as well under the Constitution. And I would direct your attention to Article II, Section 1.2, which says that each state shall appoint in such manner as the legislature thereof may direct a number of electors. And so you, the legislature, without judicial oversight, can direct and take back that power. You have the opportunity as the legislature, and legislature in this context means the state legislature. So although there has been delegated authority to your Secretary of State and according to your law, at any time, you can take back that power and that is the provision and the protection that is embedded in the Constitution to make sure that when there are instances of corruption in a state, that the state legislature, which is the representatives of we, the people, all of these wonderful people who are here today in Pennsylvania and all of your constituencies who voted and who want their voice to be heard, because we are a government of the people, by the people, for the people, we, the people, need to submit.
Thank you.
Need to submit our vote. And so I would say in terms of a remedy, you may fashion that even outside the purview of the litigation that we are now bringing. And I'm happy to go into that into more detail if the panel would prefer.
Thank you. Representative Kaufman.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here and Attorney Ellis, we appreciate your service to the nation because these are definitely difficult times and all of those who have testified, it truly does take bravery to step out in situations like this and, and talk about your personal experience. I wanted to direct this to Mayor Giuliani and, and Attorney Ellis. In the cured ballot issue, which, or uncured ballot issue, the ability to cure in one area of the state and not in others, that is certainly, to many of us, seems to be an equal protection violation under the 14th Amendment. Can you quantify what you found as far as maybe number or, or information as far as the number of ballots we're talking and, and how widespread it is across the Commonwealth as far as, you know, were there two counties that allowed for curing? And, you know, they were Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, or were there more counties out there that allowed for curing? That kind of information would be very helpful to us, I think.
There's no question, Representative, that it went on. And it went on in the two counties you mentioned and probably three or four more, curing, in other words. It did not, it did not go on in the majority of counties, Republican or Democrat. Most of them were in a project. The Elections Commissioner sent out a notice, advice that you could cure the ballot. If you checked with your lawyer, your lawyer would say, no, no, you can't do that. The legislature has to provide for a cured ballot. So your counties that were sticking to the strict letter of the law didn't provide for curing. The counties that were acting, I would say illegally, because the Election Commissioner doesn't have the authority to make that change, followed it. It does turn out that those are largely, the Biden counties did the curing and the Trump counties didn't do the curing. It's hard to know how many it affected. I could get you the number of actually cured ballots, but I don't think I can get you to the number that weren't cured.
Okay.
Who are the ones that were effective. And we argued this in front of the court. The judge said, well, maybe those people in the counties that didn't allow curing should sue that county. But that county didn't do anything wrong. That county followed the law. The reason they were deprived of their right to vote on an equal basis is because other counties followed what would be the illegal advice of the Election Commissioner, that you can cure a ballot, for which there is no authority in, in state law. So it, we will try to do better to get a good number there, but it's hard to do because a lot of it affected people who just didn't vote.
Sure. And.
But I do think the practice, you know, in some cases, the numbers are sufficient to overturn the election. In some cases, the numbers aren't. But what they do do is show how onerous and how draconian the measure they took to flip this election. I mean, some of them result in numbers that affect the outcome of the election, like not examining the ballots. Some of them don't, but there's still indications this was a deliberate fraud. This wasn't just a couple of election officials kind of screwed up. This was a deliberate, planned fraud and that's why the remedy, which seems kind of tough, is justified. If this were just a couple of mistakes, that would be a tough remedy. But this is a plan that was carried out throughout your entire state and I submit it was carried out in concert with other Democrat organizations. And if you look carefully, they picked only Democrat cities where they control law enforcement and the courts and they can get ridiculous decisions, like the first, the decision they got from a judge in Philadelphia who said, oh, you're present, why do you have to see anything? Well, because I'm an inspector, that's why. That's a purely political hack decision. And they knew they could get decisions like that in Philadelphia, in Detroit, if it were a different kind of election, Chicago, New York. Those are the kinds of cities they picked. They didn't pick, even in your state, kind of neutral cities, Democrat or Republican.
Thank you. Representative Shemel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three quick questions for three different testifiers. So we certainly know about the irregularities and inconsistencies you just detailed, an inconsistency and you can't prove a negative, that's why you can never prove votes that were never allowed to be cured. But in regard to allegations of fraud, I have a question first, and forgive me, I don't remember names, but the gentleman here from Philadelphia who has denied admittance to observe in a poll. You described being denied the ability to get into a polling place. Did you seek to be admitted to any other polling places and were also denied?
I could have gone to other polling places where I heard there was problems, but we decided to move on to other problems that, what was her name? I was actually at her polling place that when she was being totally harassed, I was one of about five, six guys to stop the harassment.
So there was no polling place that you sought admission to in and around the city of Philadelphia that just allowed you in when you displayed your orange card?
I probably could have gone to that entire ward and had the same problem. We went out of that ward because there was other problems going on that day.
Okay. Next question for a gentleman next to you, the attorney from Florida, you were observing polls and the processes in, in the city of Pittsburgh. I believe that you described being kept away from being able to observe the tabulators and so forth. That was a problem we certainly saw in other places in the city of Philadelphia. When you were eventually allowed to get closer, where perhaps you could see the ballots and the votes, did you observe anything different about the behavior of the tabulators? Did their behavior change? Did their methodologies, methodologies change? Anything to lead you to think that they were, you know, conducting the process one way when you weren't observing and a different way when you were?
In the first instance, we were never really able to, there was only one time, one element of the process where we were able to actually get reasonably close to see what a tabulator was doing. And that was with overseas and military ballots. When overseas and military ballots come in, they come in a different format that's not, not readable by the machines. And so there's a individual that takes the ballot and then keys in the votes for the voters. And of that group, we could see about three or four of those people doing that transposition of the, of those ballots. Beyond the, beyond that, and that was for a very short period of time, and actually Friday evening, Friday after the election, they were beginning to tabulate overseas and military ballots. With that singular exception, we couldn't actually see any ballot at that particular moment that you ask about. There was no opportunity to ever really see any ballot, other than that situation. And there was one, one worker that was within, oh, I don't know, eight or 10 feet of us at the, at the edge. And we did in fact see him do 35 Biden military ballots all in a row, which we found to be kind of curious, but it did not, what he was doing did equate with the papers that he had in front of him.
Okay, thanks. And my final question for Mr. Giuliani, you've alleged fraud within our, within our voting system and we've heard a lot of anecdotal evidence we have as representatives and senators and you've presented a good deal today, but amongst the affidavits you have, do you have any affidavits from anyone who is a, could be qualified, or could be quantified as a whistleblower, who actually was part of the fraud and is now willing to testify as to the fraud?
Yes, we do. We have, I believe, I'll have to check this, but I believe, sometimes I get the states a little confused, but I believe there are three that would need a subpoena to protect themselves in order to testify.
Okay. And then I would presume that's part of your legal.
And I would say at least one of them is, is a Democrat.
Okay. That's part of, part of your legal claims, I would assume.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
And if there's a subpoena process, we could work with them to come forward and they're, they're frightened for their jobs and I don't want to make too much of it, but they're also frightened for their physical safety. I mean, this is, this is a case in which one of the lawyers, one of our chief lawyers in the case, had to leave because his family was threatened, his little children were threatened for representing the President of the United States. That's not America.
Representative Jones.
Can you, can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Thanks to everyone who testified. I do have a question, but a couple just comments to sort of get on the record. For those that maybe think this is, like, we just don't like the result, that's not really the case. I've spent weeks since the election, having numerous people go through data and for the sake of time, I just want to highlight a couple of examples why some of these things just, at, at a minimum, they certainly make you scratch your head a little bit. And one thing is voter registration trends that I'm going back, we went back to 2004 and all of the presidential elections. And pretty much without exception, the registration trends in a given county are a pretty good indicator of, of how the votes would go. Statewide, for example, Democrats had a 1.1 million, I'm rounding the numbers here, in 2012, about a 1.1 million voter registration advantage and then President Obama won, won reelection. In 2016, that number was down to 900,000, just under 900,000. And as we know, President Trump won Pennsylvania by about 44,000 votes. In the weeks leading, the months leading up to the election, Republicans were gaining about 5,000 to 10,000 votes, registrations at least per week. I know that because I was spearheading our York, Pennsylvania for Trump effort in my spare time. And that, that what had been a 900,000 advantage at Election Day was down to about 680,000.
Wow.
That's a couple hundred thousand, almost all of which occurred in the, the six months or so leading up to the election, yet the president loses by 90,000 votes. Not impossible, just want to get it out there. Let's drill down a little further. My home county of York County, which netted more votes for the president than any other in 2016, we had a 13,000 increase in Republican registrations. Democrats dropped 1,000, Republicans increased 12,000, yet the president's margin of victory decreased by 2,000. In Westmoreland County, there was a 26,000 vote swing, a county even smaller than York. Democrats saw a 10% decrease in registrations, yet Joe Biden outperformed Hillary Clinton by more than 20%. It doesn't prove anything, but I want to at least bring it to everyone's attention that we're just not sort of making things up here that we don't like. Some of these are certainly head scratchers. So I'm, when you lose 10,000 Democrat registrations, gain 16,000, yet the margin of victory stays the same and Biden increases by 12,000 votes in that county, that, that's surprising. Lastly, if I may, I want to talk a little bit about, I don't know if the gentleman can, can testify or can return, but your, your witness on, the gentleman with the military background on, on the voter fraud and so forth.
Colonel Walz.
Yes, thank you, sir. I guess my question here is, do we believe or have reason to believe that the mail-in would be more or less susceptible than the Election Day vote to manipulation? And here's why I ask. Another head scratcher, I'm comparing Republican to Republican, Democrat to Democrat. We all know that Biden did better with mail-in and that was expected because a lot more Democrats voted by mail and of course, the president did better on Election Day. Nothing, nothing to see there. However, when we compare President Trump to a relatively unknown candidate named Stacey Garrity, who was elected a Republican, who won the race for treasurer, on Election Day, the president defeated, did 120,000, 128,000 votes better than, than Ms. Garrity on Election Day. Not really all that surprising, a number of people don't vote down ballot and so forth. Yet with mail-in ballots, she did 41,000 better than the president. I have a hard time understanding that. Let's go to Joe Biden. On, we have a relatively well-known Attorney General here, Democrat Josh Shapiro, who won reelection. He, on Election Day, he defeated Joe Biden by 52,000 votes. He did 52,000 better than Joe Biden. Yet with the mail-ins, Biden does 54,000 better than Shapiro. And I'm, I just sort of want to get that on everybody's radar, maybe there's an explanation, but I don't really understand how Democratic mail-in voters are that much different than Democratic Election Day voters. And interestingly enough, apparently Republicans who vote by mail are much more likely to vote for the down-ballot candidate than on Election Day. Last comment there, part of the argument is that people didn't vote down-ballot. That's going to be a lot more prevalent on Election Day when you've waited in line for two hours and you're in a hurry to get out there. But this speaks to the opposite. With a mail-in ballot, you have plenty of time to complete your ballot and to go down-ballot. So the, if that was the case, the opposite should be true if you're, if you're tracking with me. So I guess my, my question there is on, do we think the mail-in is more susceptible? And then lastly, maybe for you, Mr. Chairman, or whoever has a little more clout here than I do, we need, it is imperative that we secure the Sure System data and some of the things that we are questioning can be easily proven or disproven. We just want the facts. So for example, if we see huge numbers of inactive voters, I think one of the, the witnesses spoke to that, did we see huge numbers of inactive voters on the mail-in side? That's, that's all right there in the data. We know how frequently people voted. We know who requested mail-in ballots. Did we see multiple mail-in ballots going to the same address? It is mind-boggling, the record turnout that we saw in a state where mail-in voting is banned. is brand new during a time of COVID, where the, you know, the ground game was certainly hindered by that. Doesn't mean it didn't happen, but we have the data. This is, this is a simple query of data. This is not a manual recount of ballots. This is a simple query of data that the state possesses specifically to say, did multiple, did significant numbers of mail-in ballots go to the same address? I could, I could do that myself in probably 10 minutes if I had the data. And do we see large numbers of inactive voters coming out for a candidate who had very little enthusiasm? And maybe, maybe it all happened, but we don't have to speculate. The data is there, and I would suggest we have a look at that. So I apologize. Thank you for humoring me with that. It's just a topic we hadn't touched on very much. I wanted to throw some examples out, and I am curious if you feel the mail-in is more susceptible or less susceptible than the in-person voting.
Representative Jones, the, the user's manual for the, specifically the Dominion and the ESNS suites, they do allow the administrator to batch-process mail-in votes. So what that does is they, they process all the mail-in votes in a batch, and it can be a batch, you know, they normally scan in batches of 50, but they can just chunk all of those votes into a batch file. The administrator then can select which candidate or which percentages of that mail-in ballot go to which, to which candidate. So they're, they're very susceptible to individual manipulation by administrator operator.
And would that be, if you were trying to use large numbers of, move large numbers of votes, would it, would it be more logical to do that through the mail-in where you had a large batch at a county level? Or am I speculating too much there?
Yes, no, and it's, to do a manual recount of all those ballots is much more time-consuming. And like we mentioned earlier, if they were mass-produced, you know, and they were single-vote, then there's, there is potential to add extra ballots to the, to the count.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate you giving me the time, Mr. Chairman. I, I also am just curious what we heard, the testimony with the USB sticks in Delaware, why that's not being investigated. That, that seems like that would be criminal activity that we've heard here discussed and whether, where law enforcement is on that. Probably not your immediate concern, Mr. Mayor, but I'm curious about that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Representative Zimmerman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mayor, for coming to Pennsylvania and all those willing to testify. Thank you so much. So just a comment and then also a question. So in Lancaster County, where I'm from, since May, we registered over 12,000 new Republicans. And a large percent of those ended up being Amish. They might understand the difference between freedom and socialism more than most of us, but I think probably the audience is here for that reason as well. So just, that's just a comment, just for your information. The question I have, Mayor, for you is that as legislators here in Pennsylvania, is there one or two things that you would advise us or suggest to us that we really concentrate on and, or make, to make a change? You know, what comes to mind that would be most important for us to, to really do here in Pennsylvania?
First thing, of course, as a lawyer for my client, along with Jenna, we would, we would ask you not to certify and to certify the correct, honest votes, which I think can be arrived at several different ways. And probably the easiest way to arrive at it, just because of the huge number of votes, the votes that were not properly inspected. And when I say properly inspected, they weren't inspected at all. You could almost consider them hidden votes counted in a back room where everybody was smoking cigars. And the reason you have a lot of votes without a down-ballot, you're quite correct, Representative Jones, that it's much easier to fill out your home, you can fill out the down-ballot than rushing through a machine. However, if you only have a half hour to get 10,000 votes in, you don't have time to do the down-ballot, do you? If you're sitting, you know, in a, in a truck somewhere, right near the place you're going to bring in, in shopping bags, and I don't think we have this evidence here, but we have this evidence in Michigan, we have evidence of trucks coming in with ballots in garbage pails and ballots in cardboard boxes. So maybe it's my prosecutor's paranoia, but it seems to me that those ballots were filled out that night, and you don't have time to vote for all those. You, you've just got enough time to go. And that's why, that's why you get this strange anomaly that there are so many down-ballots not filled out for Biden.
Yes, sir. There, there, I learned as a lieutenant never to bring a problem to my superiors without a solution. That's one of the things I try to live to today. There are solutions that are available, but I've made the, the simple comment that your vote should be at least as secure as your Venmo account, and it's not. It's easily fixable with app, with blockchain. There is a process out there that was developed by MIT. It's called Votes, V-O-A-T-Z. It's, it's being fielded now. The problem is there are no national standards for federal elections, and there are no enforceable standards. So if there is a, if nothing else out of this election, if we have a set of enforceable standards and we use technology like blockchain to ensure that every vote going through the whole process is transparent from soup to nuts, then we can ensure a technologically advanced, secure election. It's not, an individual vote may be manipulable, but batches of votes would not be, so.
Great, great information. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Sure. So you asked, you asked what two things? Well, I think those two things are very clear, that you have to deal with today, and then you have to deal with the future. And the more pressing instance right now is today, and this body should deal with that in some way. And you are the vest, constitutionally vested entity to do that. You have a variety of options in front of you. And when you deliberate together how to best address that, you have the constitutional authority and permission to do it. And so the mayor has suggested one possible remedy. There are others, and you could call for a special election. Still, you can direct the manner of your electors. You have a variety of constitutional options, but one option should not be to ignore it and to certify a corrupted, irredeemably number one election. So we would ask that you deal with that today, and then for the future, look at all of these things that you've raised. Look at all of the voting machines. Look at all of these people who are interfering. Really, you have an executive office and branch that is runaway. You have from your governor to your Secretary of State to these, each of these individual election officers. This is election official fraud, and that's what's going on here. And for the sake of every future election, that should be addressed in the legislature because you also have the constitutionally vested obligation to the people of the state to address that. So my recommendation, along with the mayor, and I sincerely applaud everything that he has said as well, and on behalf of our client, but on behalf of the nation, you're right when you say that this isn't just about overturning an election. It's not about deriving the outcome. That's what the fraudsters want to do. What we want to make sure of is that we, the people, get to select and prefer our commander-in-chief, and you have the obligation and the responsibility to ensure for the people of Pennsylvania that that works.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I believe we have Representative Metcalf on Zoom with one final question. Darrell.
Can you hear me, Senator Argul?
Loud and clear.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Senator Argul, Senator Mastriano, for hosting this very important hearing. It's very important to the future of our republic today. Thank you for the invitation to the House members that are joining you there today. Thank you for the invitation for me to join you via Zoom today, and thank you for the opportunity to provide some input and ask a question of Mayor Giuliani here today. But a lot of what's been talked about, and I, and I really appreciate Mayor Giuliani and the attorney's mission to the General Assembly to re-ask our constitutional authority regarding the certification of this election. I am a former State Government Committee Chair, the head oversight for the election law for many years. I served in that position, not during the last term, but in the past. And we have battled in Pennsylvania to fight the, the fraud and fight, and fight the way that our election laws have been violated, not just for several cycles, but for decades. And we've actually had a state senate race that was overturned, I believe in the Philadelphia area back in the 90s because of fraud. So when we, when we look at what has occurred here, and I really appreciate Mayor Giuliani bringing all those individuals before us today to, to provide a testimony at this hearing. And I think even more important, I hope that we get a chance to see that their testimony was heard in a court of law where a just ruling is found to protect every legal vote that was cast here in this election in November and to discard all those votes that were not legally cast. And I, I think as, as we've been overwhelmed, as was mentioned by the senators at the beginning of this meeting, that as we, as we came through Election Day and prior up to that, we'd had three and a half million people filing for unemployment because of the unconstitutional dictates of Wolf to shut down businesses and stop people from going to work in Pennsylvania. And we were just overwhelmed with those calls. But since Election Day, we have been overwhelmed with calls from individuals who are distraught, distraught over the future of our republic, the future of our future elections, and being able to ensure that people are having their legitimate, legal votes counted to elect who's going to govern them. And, and right now, with, with the examples that were shown here today with these witnesses, a lot of the people have been calling my office and emailing me, they, they are demanding action. And as, as we've heard today, there's a lot of, there's a lot of citizens out there that have important information that needs to be shared in the courtroom to ensure that, that these fraudulent, fraudulent activities, and it's not, I mean, a lot of times when people talk about fraud, they're thinking of impersonation, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about fraudulent activities as far as a fraudulent election because they've not, they've not abided by the laws that have been passed by we, the people, through our elected legislature as the U.S. Constitution, as our state constitution, as our laws provide for to facilitate our elections. So Mayor Giuliani, as we, as we move forward, and I, I stand, I stand with, with Senator Mastriano and others that are there today, I actually sent an email out while I was listening to some of the testimony today given at the hearing to the whole Republican Caucus in the Pennsylvania House to encourage them to sign on and listen to what was happening today with this information that I think they all need to hear and that every Pennsylvanian, every American needs to hear. To, to help encourage our citizens, Mayor Giuliani, as you move forward in the court battle, I know the press has been continually, day after day, saying, no evidence, no evidence, no evidence. Well, I think we heard a lot today. Are you, do you expect that you're going to have an opportunity in the, the right level of courts in our state, in our nation, to have this evidence presented by some of these people here today and others that you have signing affidavits?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm certain that there will be a court decision that will allow us to present our evidence. The, the case in Pennsylvania was dismissed on a motion to dismiss, in which the judge made factual findings against us, basically saying he thought our claims were absurd. Of course, he has no right to do that on a motion to dismiss. On a motion to dismiss, he has to assume that everything we're saying is true, and I think it was just done to delay us. And I can't imagine a judge giving a correct decision here that wouldn't at least allow us to have a factual hearing. And the reason we came to you and some of the other state legislators is because I believe that we're being denied our right to a hearing by the courts. But then again, you do have responsibilities equal, if not superior, to the courts to oversee these elections. So we've made similar requests to the legislatures in Michigan, Arizona, and Georgia, and we're very hopeful that next week we'll get to present to them, as we also press for a hearing in court. I think it is really important for the American people to see, these are not my claims or Jenna's claims or President Trump's claims or, and many of these people came to us because they're so upset. These are the complaints of the American people. And I, I, I'm more than happy to make available to you an outline of the other affidavits. It would have been impossible to produce all the witnesses, but I can show you that for each one of these witnesses, there are anywhere from 15 to 50 other witnesses who saw the same thing. I have a list, just in Pittsburgh alone, of 27. I have a list in Philadelphia of 32. I have a list of about 40 witnesses on cure, even though, even though the numbers aren't ascertainable, there's still a lot. None of the things we're saying to you are just arguments, this is evidence. I keep explaining to people affidavits are the best evidence you can have until somebody actually gets into court and swears.
Thank you.
And our evidence is under oath. Their claims are just claims.
We have one additional question on line from Representative.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Darrell, from Representative Kiefer.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Senator Argul. Thank you, Senator Argul. Thank you, Mayor Giuliani.
Representative Don Kiefer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Mastriano, for hosting this, and thank you, Mayor, for all of the testimony that you have brought forth. Two questions I have. First is regarding testimony that we received on the pink highlighted ballots that were scanned through and submitted, and then they were able to be re, I guess, redocumented and then scanned through again. Is there any action being taken on that, given the number of ballots that we're talking about there?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that, but I'll get, I'll get it for you.
Okay.
That's not something we ran out.
Okay, that would be, that would be great to know.
We will find out.
Because I know we saw a lot of that, there's speculation out there that people were just blindly filling out these ballots, but there is supposed to be a process. And so, and it was my understanding that that process was supposed to be videoed or livestreamed and witnessed by a majority and minority inspector when you are recreating a ballot that is not able to be scanned. So that would be good to know. And the other, the second thing is, Attorney Ellis, you had made a comment regarding what our constitutional ability is. And so while we understand what the Constitution does say as far as us taking responsibility and, you know, we could intervene in certain sectors, you know, while the Constitution gave us that ability, it's been explained to us by attorneys that we took that power that was given to us as General Assembly members, and we put it into statute. And that statute says, you know, how we appoint our electors and how we certify the elections. It's all spelled out in our Pennsylvania code based upon the power that we have from the Constitution. You have a differing legal opinion of that?
Yes, I do. And, and I think that our collective, and with my co-counsel here, you can take that power back at any time. And when you have the delegation of authority, the legislature can take that back. And you also have an instance here that the law was completely ignored. So even though you have, you have a manner in which your electors are generally selected in Pennsylvania, and that's worked for the past presidential elections since those statutes were authorized and gone through the legislature, this is an election that has been corrupted. And so you can't go through that method, and those laws were violated. And that is, the General Assembly here, the legislature, is the authorized entity in the Constitution that selects the manner. You can take that power back at any time. And so when the laws were ignored, and that's where we have, and why we have all of this evidence to bring to you, is to show you each of these different types of ways that election officials have violated the manner in which you, as the General Assembly, have prescribed in the law how you select your electors. Because they violated that law, you have the constitutional authority to craft a remedy. You can take that power back at any time. You don't need a court to tell you that. So absolutely, and you can look at that, you can look at the federal law for elections. This is your constitutional prerogative. State legislature in the context of Article II, Section 1.2 means state legislature, period.
You also delegated it to the very people whose conduct is in question and who's, it's, you're asking them to investigate themselves. So given that, given the fact that this is your sole constitutional right and authority, you can always, you can always assume constitutional authority that you've delegated back. You also have a rational. You also have a rational basis for doing it, because you're asking them, I mean, this was done, one might argue, or at least that's one of the interpretations of the fact, deliberately by the governor, by the elections commissioner, who issued absurd opinions, kept telling people to violate the law. And then you're going to ask them to make a decision on the election that allegedly they corrupted? It seemed to me you have a perfect right to take that back and make that decision de novo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for your patience. The public, our many witnesses, our senators and representatives. As you've seen today, this COVID pandemic has made holding a public hearing a little bit more challenging than usual, but we have still received an enormous amount of information today, information that we will share with every one of our members. There is no doubt in my mind that we will pass legislation in the House and the Senate based on what we have learned today. I also want to thank Senator Mastriano. Doug and his staff have been enormously helpful today. It really goes without saying, we would not be here without Doug Mastriano. And so I'm going to, I'm going to give him, I'm going to give him the last word, because I know even if I didn't, he'll take it anyway, because, and he deserves to have it. Doug?
I love you, Senator Argul. Thank you for being willing to use your committee to do this hearing. So we pulled the trigger yesterday morning around 9:00 a.m., and look what happened here. And as Jesus said, "You shall know the truth, and the truths will set you free." Guess what? Guess what? The truth's out there. Media, you should have found these witnesses. You need to do your job. Now you see them out here. Do your job. You're essential to this republic, and without you doing your job, instead of being partisan hacks, this republic can't stand. So now you, you got some information, you got some witnesses with courage. These people are heroes to me. As a retired Army Colonel, I look at them and I say, you guys are outstanding. Thanks for being a little step up. Because I am cognizant that the so-called tolerant people on the left will not show much love or tolerance to people they disagree with. And so thank you for standing, because you're, you're warriors, being able on, to stand, stand for and save this republic. So thank you for going forward here. I mean, indeed, I started this off quoting from John Adams. We are in Adams County, you know, facts are stubborn things. There's a lot of hard facts out there, and guess what? As history and change in 1863 in Gettysburg, back then, it's July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, so on this day, history's changing for our country and state, back at Gettysburg once again. I mean, I don't even know how this happened in America. We, we could send 50 years ago, you know, men to, to the moon, but we can't have a safe, secure election in Philadelphia and Pennsylvania? What's going on here? It's got to be by design, because we have the technology, we have stealth aircraft that are the envy of the world, but we can't run an election better than Afghanistan? Congressman Perry, you and I are in Afghanistan, and I don't know how in the heck Afghanistan has more secure, safe elections than Pennsylvania does. I mean, beam me up, Scotty, there's no sign of intelligent life anywhere, really. We moved heaven and earth with American dollars to secure elections in Iraq and Afghanistan and elsewhere. We can't do it in our own state? It's by design. There's people in Pennsylvania not interested in safe, secure elections, and we have to correct this. There's two things that need to happen. First off, we need to make sure that the real winner is sent forth from this, this presidential election. And number two-- Number two, we need to fix this, this doesn't happen ever again. You know, I can't believe, I can't believe we're having this conversation here in Pennsylvania. You know, this is the kind of stuff I hear about that goes on Belarus under Lufashenko, or in Russia under Putin, under, under Saddam Hussein's Iraq. Really? Here in our state? I mean, this is disgusting to me. And I watched, when I was doing strategy in Russia, you know, Putin's people stuffing ballot boxes, the same thing that happened in Pennsylvania. When I saw that 15, 20 years ago, I was like, wow, thank God we're not like that. What happened? What happened? We're not going to let it stand. You know, I saw, you have to forgive people, because we are a constitutional republic. So I'll forgive those that say democracy, but I saw one man had a sign in Philadelphia, and the irony wasn't lost on me. Democracy dies in Philadelphia. Can you imagine the irony of that? You know, where the light of liberty was lit in 1776, it transformed this world, where in this very same state, a new birth of freedom. And then, of course, last I forget, 2001, Tom, Todd Beamer, let's roll. You know what? It's our time to roll. This is no time. You know, democracy can die in darkness, in dark rooms with no transparency and accountability. We're shining light on this darkness here. We're going to take our state back. We're not standing aside in this hour. You know, as Representative Metcalf rightly said, in 1994, there was so much shenanigans and cheating in the Marx versus Stinson case, that a federal district judge threw out the election results, took a senator out of Harrisburg, state senator, and put the Republican in because the election results were so corrupted. So we do have a precedent here, federal courts, and I hope you take a hard look at that here. Has our election results in Pennsylvania at the presidential and other levels been so corrupted that the results have to be thrown out? That's going to be a, a case you're going to have to make before the Supreme Court there, but it sure sounds like something stinks in Denmark or in Philadelphia. I don't know. You know, one vote, one person, one legal vote per person, and any cheating goes in there disenfranchises an American. And I can't believe this is happening here, and we're not going to let it stand. I don't know why it's so hard. You know, I know, I know it's, it's, it's hard, because this has been going on here for a lot longer than we imagined. But Inglatian 6:9, we're told by St. Paul, "Grow not weary doing good, because in due time you'll reap your harvest." We're going to reap our harvest. The time for dithering-- The time for dithering and deliberation is over. It's time for decisive action. We have to protect our Commonwealth and our nation. The eyes of the world are upon us, and let's turn the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania from a laughing stock to the pride of the world once again, as we've always had been and need to be again. This is our day, this is our hour, this is our time. So yes, Mr. Franklin, a republic, if you can keep it, we're going to keep it. Can you keep it? Can you? Will you? We're going to keep the republic. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you all. We stand adjourned. Three and a half hours here at the Wyndham, here in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. Three and a half hours of what we expected we might hear today, testimony from Rudy Giuliani, Jenna Ellis, and numerous witnesses that have signed affidavits of witnessing voter fraud, voter election throughout the state of Pennsylvania, and he alluded through other states in this country. So we knew this day would come. We knew the evidence would be upon us. We knew that they were going to lay out a game plan, and the game plan is to not allow the electoral votes from this state to be awarded to Joe Biden because of proven election fraud. Everybody, I am Brian Glenn. I have had the honor to stand here today and listen to these three and a half hours of testimony. We saw some Zoom witnesses as well. We even saw the president himself make a phone call into the room here and give his thoughts. He spoke for about eight to 10 minutes about the election, about what took place three weeks ago, and about the voter suppression around the country of, of election officials being bossed out of an area. We saw mail-in balloting being discriminately counted. We saw voting machines being shut down across the country, and we heard Dominion come up several times. And I would imagine we'll hear more of that as we get further and further into this. And of course, they laid out a press conference today, said this is just the first step in many improving election fraud. They're on to other states as well, like Michigan and Arizona. Great to hear from the president there as well. We want to thank everyone who's watching us right now. We had tremendous numbers on our YouTube feed and our Facebook feed, so we thank you so much. And as a reminder, we are viewer-supported. It's donations from people like you right now watching allows us to go to press conferences like this. To get involved, go to RSBnetwork.com, that's R-S-B network dot com backslash donate, and you can contribute to our team here as we are on the road. We've been on the road for several months, following the president through the rallies, and this is just an addition to what we want to bring you today. Also, a special shout out to our partner, Mike Lindell. Now, that is a true patriot, and I know that he appreciates us being here right now, and we want to say thank you to him. And you can actually say thank you as well by going to MyPillow.com. That's MyPillow.com and picking up one of several items on that website that's on sale right now. And if you go to the promo code box and put R-S-B-N, that's R-S-B-N, you can get up to 66% off on any of the products there on the website. That's MyPillow.com. That's MyPillow.com. Enter the promo code R-S-B-N. And of course, those proceeds help him, help us do all of this, and we certainly appreciate our partners over at MyPillow. So to recap, this is just stage one of this pursuit for the truth in this election. We want to make sure that every legal vote is counted, and every fraudulent vote is discounted and removed from the electoral system. You know, this is one of the things we pride ourselves in this country, and we heard it numerous times today, that we are not Afghanistan, we are not some third world country. We have an electoral process here in this country that we must follow the law, and that was definitely one of the themes here today, is to make sure every legal vote is counted. As a reminder, Monday, I'll be at the White House as we tour the decorations for the Christmas that the First Lady and their staff has put out. And of course, Liz Willis will be live in Savannah, Georgia, as well, for that Trump bus tour that we're involved with, MyPillow as well. All right, that wraps it up here in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. I'll send it back to the studio. I'm Brian Glenn. See you next time. Goodbye. God bless. That's all for now.